Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 17, 2020 Glendale City Council Meeting. Due to evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from LA County Health Department, the Glendale City Council Meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. This meeting can be viewed on local cable charter and spectrum Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. You may also stream online through our website www.glandalc.gov by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting live streaming, which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100, which is on the screen. See it here. Please don't call in advance of the agenda item. With this being said, may I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Brotman?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Agajanian?
Wasen. What's next, please?
Next would be flag salute.
Please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic and to one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ajamiyan?
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Let us pray. Tonight, we gather in these chambers to conduct the city's business and deliberate on issues affecting our residents. Help us have the productive discussions that will broaden our perspective. Help us to take the various ideas presented and think of ways to flesh them out. If we do disagree, let it be on the content and not personality conflicts. Help us to resolve any disputes gracefully, be creative problem solvers, and have great team spirit. Help us to find principles that we all can agree on and put these into action. Finally, we ask that you watch over and protect the first responders who keep our neighborhoods, businesses, and cities safe. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ajamiyan. What's next? Next item, please.
The agenda for the November 17, 2020 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Tuesday, November 10, 2020, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. What's next, please?
Next would be presentations and appointments. The regular Housing Authority and City Council meeting for November 24, 2020 have been canceled. The next regular meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, December 1, 2020.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor?
And yes, Ms. Devine.
Thank you. Speaking of the Housing Authority, I'd like to entertain an emotion to adjourn today's Housing Authority meeting.
May I move the item?
Is there a second?
Second.
We are adjourned at 8:00 PM. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
6:08.
Thank you, Ms. Devine.
Mm-hmm. You're welcome.
Okay. What's next, please?
Next would be consent items, including minutes to following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Brotman. Mr. Brotman?
I would like to pull one item for a brief discussion.
Which item?
The item on weed abatement. I have to look at the number.
F.
F. 4F.
4F.
Yeah. Okay. 4F is pulled for the balance.
And I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
Okay. So, roll call, please, for the balance of the item.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Second. Mrs. Devine, second.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Okay. Item 4F, please.
Public Works regarding contract award for weed control services. One motion authorizing the interim city manager to execute a contract with pest options incorporate in the amount of $122,400 annually for a period of three years, or $367,200 total for weed control services for the city of Glendale, two resolution appropriating $10,200.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. As City Clerk read into record, this is, this item is related to award of a contract for the city's weed-controlled services. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Imroni, Public Works Director, for a brief presentation on the item and open it up questions.
Thank you, Mr. Imroni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. This was a bid, basically, that we sent out for soliciting proposals for our weed-control services that we do throughout the city. This year's was not only for weed control throughout the city, but we also added the north San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District. We had one bidder, basically, that submitted, and we had requested a regular bid for this service as well as, as well as an alternate bid. The regular bid was for the use of EPA-approved chemicals for treating the weeds, and then the alternate bid was for the use of organic materials and mechanical maintenance. The alternate bid came at almost three times as much as the regular bid, so we are recommending the award to, to the contractor, the low bidder, or the low, or the base, for the base bid, basically, not the alternate bid, in the amount of the $122,000. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And that we had only one bidder?
Yes. We had a lot of interest in it, but we only received one bid, unfortunately.
That all the time bothers me, but however, Mr. Brotman?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Imroni, and we already spoke about this, but I had some questions from the public, so I wanted to make sure everybody understood. So firstly, can you just confirm that this vendor will not be using Roundup anywhere in Glendale? And in fact, we don't, we don't use Roundup anywhere else through our, any, any direct weed abatement we do with Public Works or with, or with the Parks Department. Is that correct?
Councilmember Brotman, that is correct. We don't use Roundup or glyphosate as it's, you know, the trade name is, is called, anywhere in our operations in Public Works or in parks.
Okay. And the other question is, are the, I know there are four products that they're going to be using, four chemical products that they will be using, and these are EPA-approved, and this, I didn't ask you earlier, is this US EPA or California EPA?
This would be the US EPA.
US EPA. Okay. So, I understand, you know, I understand that the, you know, entirely going organic may be unrealistic at this time. But, you know, the US EPA, I mean, I don't place a lot of confidence in their, in their approvals, certainly not today's EPA. And I know they do allow continued use of Roundup, so that in and of itself doesn't give me a whole lot of comfort. So what I wanted to ask is, I know this is a three-year contract, and I think when we discussed it, you said we could, we're not locked into the full three years. Is that right?
Well, the contract is for three years, but what we can certainly look at is, look at it in about a year and see if there are any additional organics that are on the market that could do a good job in terms of treating weed and could be considered pre-emergent in terms of the weed control, and certainly look at that and evaluate at that point.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that would be my ask, is that we, you know, we approved this today, but, you know, within a year, we, you know, staff do a little more analysis, because I know, you know, you went out and asked, and asked these larger bidders for an alternate price, but these are firms that, you know, do large projects and probably don't use organics as a regular part of their business. So I wouldn't expect that we would get a good response on that, and I think it would be worth it to look more deeply at some of these products. I looked at them a little bit. I mean, they, they don't look especially problematic, but, I mean, what do I know? So I would like staff to look at it a little bit more and come back to us within the first year, and if, if we find that there are ways that we can reduce the use of chemical products in the city, I would like us to do that. So that would be my ask. I, I would just ask if any of my colleagues would support that. That would be, you know, I would move to approve the item with the condition that we, we see that report back within the year.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that. I would, I would second that.
Okay. Mr. Imroni, thank you. Again, may I have a roll call, please?
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me.
Go ahead. Mr. Najarian?
But I just, I just want to look at this holistically. As I read the report, if we had gone to organics, it would have required also some manual work. Manual, to me, means that you're going to have a two-stroke weed eater or some other sort of fossil-fuel-driven device, which is going to be digging up the weeds or slicing them up. So let's look at the whole, whole thing. We want to reduce the impact in its entirety. I think that's the thrust of Mr. Brotman's discussion. Let's make sure we look at that, too.
Absolutely.
So basically, this item will come back in a year's time, right? Yes, Mr. Galanian?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Public Works and Mr. Imroni's staff will do a deeper analysis and look at other available alternatives, organic alternatives, in a year's time and provide a report back to council.
Thank you.
Let's give this to the Sustainability Commission on their to-do list, perhaps, unless we want to do it ourselves, but...
What? I mean, right now?
That's just, that's just a side comment. That has nothing to do with the motion.
Okay. That's side comment. Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. What's next? Next item, please.
Next item is City Council and staff comments.
Mr. Mayor? I would like to invite my colleagues to share any comments that they have.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Devine?
First, I have a question. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. When can we begin the nominating process for our appointees to the Sustainability Commission?
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Councilmember Devine, we are currently in the process of putting some guidelines together for council's consideration when you are going to interview potential applicants for nomination. That should be wrapped up by the end of the month, and you can start the negotiate, the interview process with the potential candidates in December and with the goal of nominating them by councilmembers in January. And it's our, my hope and expectation is that the Sustainability Commission's first meeting will be sometime in February.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Secondly, is the chief, Fire Chief available tonight?
Yes. She, I mean, he is a bit...
Okay. Is he going to give us a report on COVID and maybe give our residents some protocols or warnings for the upcoming holiday?
Yes, Councilmember Devine, actually, he had put a short PowerPoint presentation together that he can share with council.
Oh. Does he want to do it now or after my comments?
He can do it now.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Sylvia Alonsis, your Fire Chief. I did prepare a short presentation with some coronavirus update information for each of you and our viewing public. I'd like to go through that short presentation, and then, as Councilmember Devine requested, I have maybe some warnings and some recommendations for our community to heed as we enter the holiday months, which are upon us now. First of all, the case numbers, as should be no surprise to anybody who watches the news, are not good. We are facing some of the worst numbers that we have seen since the pandemic started. Our cases here in Los Angeles County have doubled over the last two weeks, which is a scary number. So I'll run, I'll run through these quickly. Worldwide, we are at 54-plus million cases with over 1 million deaths. In the United States, we are at 10 million-plus cases with 243,000-plus deaths. In California, we have surpassed the 1 million mark for positive cases with over 18,000-plus deaths. And in Los Angeles County, we are at 32, I'm sorry, 322,287 cases with 6,874 deaths.
I'm sorry, Chief. When you collected this data?
This information was accurate as of 11/14.
11/14?
November 14th, correct.
Yes. Because now we passed...
Yeah. The numbers are increased since then.
7,000.
Yep. In Glendale, we were at 5,234 cases with 186 deaths. This depiction, which I have used several times, comes from the LA County COVID dashboard. It's available to the viewing public each day and updated fairly regularly. A number that I have mentioned in my previous 10 or so presentations that I feel is a number that makes me feel comfortable based on our population and the activity throughout our city that makes me... Zero is obviously the ultimate number that I would like us to reach, but under 20 is a number that I feel was a good number. We did fairly well between about August 20th and about October 20th. We were right around that 20, 25 or so number, and as you can tell, we did peak at the end of October and then have continued to have some, some numbers that are scary. And as you can see there towards the end, the week of November 10th on through now, we are back in that upward trend north of, or above 20. Our death tolls, the seven-day average, we have maintained under 2 for our seven-day average of new case deaths. But one thing that I, that I do want to caution is the hospitalizations and the deaths are trailing indicators. So if the numbers that we are seeing, which we are above 2,000 now for several days in a row, are any indicator of what is to come over the next few weeks, early on, when the large majority of the positive cases were in the elderly community, we were seeing a much quicker death turnaround, somewhere in the 10 to 14 days. My fear now, because we are seeing a younger demographic become positive and we are seeing some less severe cases, largely, we believe, because of the younger demographic, is that that indicator may be trailing a bit farther. So we may be more in the four-to-five-to-six-week trailing indicator of our hospitalizations catching up and then potentially the deaths catching up. This next depiction is the LA County cases, and as you can tell, from about November 1st, we have been in a steady increase of new cases throughout LA County, with, as I mentioned, for the past several days, we have been above 2,000 cases each day. The deaths, again, we have hovered, the seven-day average death toll in Los Angeles County has hovered in that 15 to 20 range. This next graph is one that, again, I've used several times. I believe in presentations 6, 7, and 8, I was proud that we were, originally, we were the highest one on this, when, I believe, presentation 1, 2, and 3, and then we did really well in Glendale, and we were back to the bottom of this graph. In the 14-day average per capita cases, we are at 19.6 cases, second only to Los Angeles, to the city of Los Angeles, which is at 24.3. We are right there with Burbank at 19.26 cases. This next pie chart shows the cases in Los Angeles County by age. And as you can see, and it is somewhat hard to tell, I'm sure, online, but the number-one age group that has the 34.1% cases is our 50, excuse me, our 30-to-49-year-old demographic. Second is our 18-to-29 with 24.9, and third, 50-to-64 at 19.1. Now, again, this is cases. The next one is deaths by age. And as you can tell, the large majority, 39, almost 40%, 39.9% of our deaths have been 80-plus-year-olds, and second to 65-to-79-year-olds at 31.4%. Our hospitalizations, I was able to speak with all three of our hospital presidents and CEOs today, and the message that they wanted me to send is that we have seen over the past two weeks a increase in hospitalizations, however, not the increase that some of the county is seeing. We are seeing, as I mentioned a bit ago, a younger demographic becoming infected, and they feel that we are in a good position, continue to be in a good position at all three hospitals, to be able to accept the patients that do need to be hospitalized. And, and there is a feeling, and it's not clinically proven yet, but that the younger demographic in the later time of year has affected the virus. The severity and the illnesses that we are seeing are just not as severe as they were earlier. However, my fear is that the younger demographic and the younger positivity rates will eventually transcend into our elderly community, and those continue to be the people that are at most risk of severe cases and ultimately, potentially, death. So in Los Angeles County, our hospital bed availability for regular medical, surgical, and telemetry, telemetry beds is 451 beds available, and our ICU bed availability is at 106 beds available. And as I've mentioned before on this graph, we, this is a reverse graph. We want the high number, or the high mark is what we want in this one, not the low mark, because the low mark means that we have less available beds. Our mobility continues to trend fairly normal. Transit is still considerably down. Our walking and driving is above baseline. However, we, we do foresee this changing a bit with, with continued orders that may come down from the county or the state.
Chief Lanzus, could you go back and read the colors?
Yes. The, the walking is, we are plus 27% on walking, which is the yellow color. The driving, we are plus 7%, which is the red color. And then transit, we are still less than 50% transit, which is the purple color.
Thank you.
Lastly, I would just like to remind our viewing public that if, we're often asked, you know, who should be tested, and the recommendation from the Department of Public Health and CDC continues to be, if you are experiencing fever, coughing, or shortness of breath, and that's or, not and, you should first call your doctor. There's three things the doctor, that could come from their phone call to the doctor. The doctor advises you to come into the hospital or to the doctor's office. The doctor identifies that your symptoms are mild and advises you to home isolate, or you're unable to reach your physician or your doctor immediately, and your symptoms become severe, at which point we urge you to go to an urgent care, an emergency room, and/or call 911 for help. I would like to remind our viewing public of what I have called the three W's. They are simple to remember, and I believe strongly that if we all fight this together and we all go in with this together, that we could continue to keep our city safe and continue to keep our numbers low. And those three things are the three W's. Wear a mask, watch your space, and maintain a six-foot separation from all people whom you live with. And that means all people. What I'm telling people is you should walk around with the expectation that every person that you come into contact with, that you do not live with, is positive. And if you do that and you maintain that six-foot separation. And lastly, wash your hands and practice good hygiene. I've been asked, Councilmember Devine and Councilmember Brotman asked me what I thought the increased numbers are, and my fear is that there are several things that have caused it. Certainly, family mixing at homes, gatherings at homes, both small and large. Gatherings and protests, both locally, nationally, and on the world spectrum, I believe, have increased and continue to help spread the virus. And I just think that if we are all careful, if we are all smart, if we all take this seriously, we are certainly not out of the woods, and if anybody thought we were, this is the second wave that we have warned about and been warned about. And we must, as we enter the holiday months, and I know families want to get together for Thanksgiving and for Christmas, we must be careful and maintain our space where possible and stay home if you can. If you do not need to be out, stay home. That is the safest place for us all. That's the end of my report. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Chief Lanzus. Any question from the chief?
Um, may, I have a...
Okay.
Comment. Thank you. Thank you. So, chief, I have to relay that I was at the Americana last week, and there were four teenage boys without masks. And I would say that probably 99.9% of the people at the Americana had on masks. These four teens did not. I questioned the security guard, and I said, "Did you say anything to those boys?" And he said, "Yes, they refused to wear masks." I said, "Do you have a mask to give them? Can you give them one?" And he said, "They refused to take them." What I take away from what you just told us is that these four boys, who refuse to wear masks, are in public at the Americana, and if they possibly pick up this virus, they will take it home to their parents, to their grandparents, who could possibly die from this virus.
Absolutely, Councilmember Devine.
So I think the warning, this warning has to go out to parents. And again, you saying that it's 35 to, what was it, 30 to 59-year-olds or something?
49.
49. Those are the exact parents who are going to be making Thanksgiving dinner, more than likely. So they're the ones that have to be very careful about masks and spacing, et cetera, not inviting too many people. So I hope our community takes this warning and these recommendations to heart and, and will follow them so that our numbers don't, don't go up any, any higher. Thank you for this report, Chief Lanzus. And I, I want to go on with my comments, if I may, Mayor.
Please, go ahead.
Chief Lanzus, I want to congratulate you, first of all, for being elected to the Los Angeles Fire Chiefs Association Board. Congratulations. You know, I know that the goal is common regional and united vision for our fire departments, and it's always good to have one of our leaders at the table. So congratulations, and good for you. And I also want to bring up the occasion or the scenario where we received a letter of commendation from Ingrid Braun of the Mono Sheriff's Office. of commendation from Ingrid Braun of the Mono Sheriff's Office. I guess she's a coroner. And she was commending our fire department and our police department for saving her father's life. Do you want to tell us a little bit about that, Chief?
Sure. Yes, thank you for bringing this up, Councilmember Devine. I don't have the specifics in front of me. I wish I did, but several weeks ago, our firefighters and our Glendale police officers responded to the home of the Mono Sheriff's father for a report of him being ill. When they arrived at the home, they found him unconscious near the door. He had collapsed from what appeared to be on his way home from the grocery store. Our firefighters quickly, with the assistance of our police officers, treated him, transported him to a local hospital, and were able to save his life. He is doing well, as we speak today. An important thing that was mentioned in the sheriff's letter was the non-medical treatment that our firefighters performed afterwards. It appeared that when he collapsed, his groceries were strewn across the floor in his home. Our firefighters, after safely sending him to the hospital, were able to pick up all of his belongings, clean up his home. There were some broken items that had spilled on the floor, and they gathered all those things, picked them up, put the refrigerated items in the refrigerator, and just went above and beyond and exemplified our core values of excellent customer service. And I'm very, very proud of all of those members that were on that incident, and as well as our police officers.
Yeah, that was quite a, a very, very nice letter. Goes to show you the value of welfare checks that we do for people that don't even, you know, that don't live here, who have family here that they need to kind of keep an eye on, and you all do a wonderful job. And I would just want to mention Captain Jeffrey, Jeff Brooks of the fire department and his paramedics and ambulance operators, and Glendale Police Department's Barrelet, Insalaca, and San, who were on the scene, and she referred to them as heroes. So thank you very much for that, that kind of service that, you know, we kind of take for granted, but we have to thank you for that. So thank you, chief, and thank you to the police department as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Lanzus.
Okay, my next item has to do with the Southern California Climate Adaptation Plan. And I want to ask staff, are we involved in that? Because I want to encourage staff to explore this climate change, the adaptation plans, because every community is different, and we need to develop a plan to meet and address our city's climate change. So are we involved in that at all?
Mr. Gulani?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, member of City Council, Councilmember Devine, our sustainability officer, David Jones, has actually started drafting our very own climate adaptation plan, and he has been in contact with that agency for reference and finding some materials that we can use.
Great.
So it should be going to the Sustainability Commission for feedback and recommendation that will come back then to council next year.
Okay, great. And Kimberly Clark was the contact that they mentioned at SCAG, so just in case. Great, that's great news. I'm glad to hear that. Lastly, oh, another, I attended a panel discussion done by the Glendale Environmental Coalition on environmental justice. It was quite interesting, but I just want to point out that two of the items that they were focusing on was our transportation connectivity, bike lanes, and I think we've discussed that in the past. We have bike lanes going nowhere, and I think we have to continue to work on connectivity in our city, on the bike lanes, and of course, on our beeline buses. So I hope we will take those, their words to heart. I know, I think they are important issues that we need to deal with. And finally, and I'm sorry to have to announce the passing of Mary Ann Plumlee. She lived to be ninety years old. She lived in Glendale for almost six decades. She was elected to the Glendale City Council on April 12, 1993. There she is. And she served until 1997. Mary Ann was a very strong and effective supporter of our Glendale Police Foundation. I was a part of that foundation when she was the treasurer. She served as treasurer for many years. She was involved in almost all of the foundation police luncheons, and she could often be seen at the door welcoming the guests. She was also a proud member of Glendale Kiwanis and a number of other organizations. Mary Ann served our community proudly. She was quite close to her sons, Donald, who lives in Florida and is a doctor, and David Plumlee, who is an attorney in Glendale. So I would request that we adjourn our meeting tonight in memory of Mary Ann Plumlee. She will be missed. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Is there any other comments, or I go to next item? Is there any other comment by anybody?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Katsakhian.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Did you want to go first? I know you have an adjournment request as well.
Mr. Katsakhian, you go ahead, and then we give the floor to Mr. Najarian. Don't worry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to express my deep appreciation to everyone in our greater Glendale community who has shown support for the people of Armenia and Artsakh over the last month and a half and more. You know, it was very incredibly touching and very much appreciated by so many to see that our own Glendale Diado Los Muertos Committee put up an ofrenda and altar on the day of Diado Los Muertos on Artsakh Avenue to show support and concern for the war and the terrorist attacks happening in Armenia and Artsakh. On Sunday, I attended an event that was also a launch of an augmented reality monument on that street. That's a virtual monument dedicated to Artsakh that anyone can view using your smartphone camera. It's something very new, very different. But I want to thank Mashinka Hakopian in helping put this together along with all of her collaborators. They had a small gathering for the launch of this. And also Homem and Ara Chapter organized a walkathon to raise awareness and all of these and so many more that are just too many to name. Each and every single individual and group working towards a lasting peace for that region that respects the territorial integrity of Armenia and Artsakh. And for that, I think I'm great, I like, I speak for myself, and I know I speak for a lot of other people when I say this, that it's been truly heartwarming to see that form of support from all parts of the community. However, given our fire chief's comments, we have to ensure that when these gatherings do happen, that, you know, to limit them, to really be careful, because we do have a pandemic, we're in the midst of a pandemic, and we have to take that very seriously. I want to also congratulate the city clerk's office and the city staff, and everyone from the city manager's office to GTV Six in helping get the word out about the November general elections. This was one of the first elections that I was not involved in. I just got to vote, and that was pretty much it, but I was very impressed with the amount of outreach that we were able to do. I'm excited to see the number of voters that participated. I think we, throughout the state and in other places, we hit record voter turnouts. But it did make me nostalgic just a little bit, and I want to thank staff for their hard work. And speaking of our excellent city staff, my next request is one that I'd like to make with a very heavy heart. And it is with great sadness that I ask that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of the former assistant city clerk of the city of Glendale, someone who all of you knew very well, Rita Fegate Mosler Buchanan, who was born on August 9 in 1956 in Gadsden, Alabama. She was a child born to the late YZ Mosler and Christine Gary Mosler Streeter. Rita attended elementary school at LV Johnson General Forest and Emma Sampson High School, where she was one of the first black cheerleaders, an honor student, and a talented piano player. She attended Tennessee State University, and was a very proud tiger, and received her Bachelor's of Science in accounting. And not many people knew this, but she was at school, she was in the same school at the same time as Oprah Winfrey. She later went on to receive her Master's in Business at California State University Northridge, and she started her career with the city of West Covina in the city clerk's office, and later accepted a promotion, promotional position with the city of Glendale, and became our assistant city clerk. And this is where I came to know Rita. I remember her sharp wit and humor and zest for life. She was one of the most knowledgeable people I had worked with in the city clerk profession, someone I relied on tremendously. And she was always honest, proud of her profession, proud of being a public servant, and the role that she had in defending our democratic processes, and she loved interacting with the residents and other staff. She retired from the city of Glendale for a brief period, worked in the passing of city clerk's office, then she came back to help the city with our most recent election in March. So many of you got to see her again, and she was a great asset. But last year, in January 2019, Rita was faced with the battle of cancer. She was a trooper and was determined to beat the odds of surgery and daily appointments of chemo and radiation treatments. Then, just as she thought she was on the road to recovery, she was faced with another setback in July, and with another round of surgery and chemo radiation in August 2019. In spite of everything, she was determined to beat all odds and continue with her life. She had a saying that the devil is the liar. Rita had a strong spirit of giving and helping those whom she cared about, no matter what, and you all knew this. She fought a good fight of faith and made her transition on November 6, 2020. She'll be missed by everyone in the city of Glendale. I'd like to ask that we adjourn also in her memory this evening.
Yes. That's so sad. I knew Rita, and this is so sad anyway. Okay, thank you. Thank you for informing us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, yes, Mr. Najarian?
I just have a comment.
Yes.
Is Chief Pavelitis in the room?
Yes, he's here.
Well, if he could come up, I'll set the stage. It was, it was Friday evening about 5:00 PM when I got a frantic call from the government relations director for Airbnb. Airbnb has tried to be a responsible corporate citizen, as you know, when we discuss our short-term rentals and our prohibition on such. But the gentleman, John Choi, called me very concerned and very frustrated. They had learned that a party was being promoted in the northwest Glendale neighborhood in a single-family residence. They had picked this up on the social media and their research. It was being promoted by a rather infamous individual who had last promoted a party in Glendora in which several shots were fired, and I'm not sure if there were any fatalities or not. This was built as a stripper party, and there were hundreds of people expected to come to a home on Linden Avenue. I won't give the address, but it was Linden Avenue. And they had tried, on their part, to pull the plug on it, and they, nothing but refusal by both the promoter and then by the actual person who had rented the home for the festivities. It was then that I turned to Chief Pavelitis. He was in the middle of his evening walk, and they were going to have a separate pickup location a little bit away from the home. So the revelers would go there, catch a shuttle bus, and get dropped off at the home. And, Chief, I turned it over to you. I haven't followed up with you. I know you were calling out the, if I could use the word troops, maybe that's not correct, but the officers to deal with it. I don't know how it ended, but if you could just tell us all what happened.
Well, I guess I can cut to the chase and say that the party didn't occur in Glendale. We actually sent officers to both the pickup location and to the place where the party was supposed to be, and were in contact with Airbnb. When we got there, we were told that, it sounds like because of our involvement and the city's involvement, that the party had been moved to some undisclosed location. We obviously had officers continue to monitor through the night there and monitor the rest of the city in case they'd moved it somewhere else in the city. With no party occurring in the city, there are some people that did show up at the pickup location, and a shuttle vehicle showed up to the pickup location. Turns out that vehicle was not currently registered and had not been registered in some time, so I'm sure they were greatly disappointed when the shuttle vehicle ended up on the back of a tow truck heading out. So, as I said, and the night for us was very quiet. We just monitored the locations and had no issues.
Great, well, thank you, chief, for your quick response in your department. You always do a great job. But also, let's give thanks to the Airbnb Corporation. They do take their responsibility seriously, and they rang the alarm to let someone in the city know that something was going to occur. So thank you to them also, and I guess this is a, file this under a stripper party diverted. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have. I did have a request for adjournment, but I'll wait for another meeting for that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Najarian. Okay, Mr. Brotman?
No, I have nothing.
Okay. Next item, please.
Next item is community event announcements, three-minute portion. Mayor, I do have two callers on the line.
No problem. Now, I would like to take any calls from the public as it relates to the community event announcements. We will be taking at least five callers, and let's listen to the first caller.
Kathy Morphopoulos. Kathy, you're live.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. Just want to make sure I'm completely turned off on anything. All right. So, good evening. My name is Kathy Morphopoulos. Now, 2020 has been such a hard year for America and for Glendale. The U.S. medical authorities that are directing our response to COVID-19 have also issued urgent warnings against today's potent marijuana. If you go to the websites of the Center for Disease Control and the Surgeon General, you will see the latest research and the warnings. Now, some people think those precautions should be ignored. Their attitude is, this drug is legal, so who cares? I think the responsible attitude should be, the research should be known, and that we need to be cautious about today's genetically-modified weed. As our surgeon general warns, the perception of harm has decreased, so people aren't aware of the risk. But the sad truth is the danger has increased due to the unprecedented levels of THC. Now, the cannabis industry denies the research, just like with the opioid crisis. Purdue Pharma claimed that their Oxycontin drug was safe and not addictive. It took years to prove that the promises were false. With Glendale's current ban, we have avoided a lot of the troubles tied to this industry. Now, in 2016, when we voted, California voters believed that the public would pay more to buy weed from permitted dispensaries. That hope has largely failed because the black market has expanded, not contracted. The legal market is supposedly on the edge of collapse, according to the LA Times. The voters also believed that the government could control, tax, and regulate the new industry. But according to the recent government audit and our own governor, this promise has also proven to be false. But it's not entirely our fault. The industry itself has proven itself to not be willing to follow the rules. The false claims, the lack of following the rules, has put a burden on every city that has permitted these industries. Why is this issue important? Because the bottom line is the next generation. When you read the list of side effects, you will see the reverse of what teenagers and young adults need. These people need to be able to learn, to be competitive, to be emotionally and mentally stable. What does weed deliver? Look at the side effects. It's the reverse. There was also supposed to be a green rush of money, so the cities would have the money to handle all the new problems, but the money has failed to materialize. Only a few will make money from this, what they call addiction-for-profit business. But it won't be me, it won't be you, and it won't be Glendale. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Joanne Morris, you're live. Joanne?
Yeah. Good evening.
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Joan Morris, and I have lived in Glen Oaks Canyon since 1985. I joined the board of the Glen Oaks Canyon Homeowners Association in 1998, and there met the late Jerry Rankin, also on the board. As many of you know, Jerry was passionately devoted to the canyon, following hillside development, the Shoal Canyon landfill, and Adam Schiff's Rim of the Valley corridor legislation. I understood the source of Jerry's motivation when he described the Glen Oaks Canyon of his childhood, pre-Shoal landfill, a canyon containing caves, a stream, and even a horse stable, an area Jerry and his brother loved to explore. Jerry also talked about the original promise, the Joint Powers Agreement, or the JPA, from 1959, which stated the landfill would be, quote, "transferred by the county to city solely for park and recreation purposes when the landfill is completed," end quote. This was to happen, quote, "seventeen years from the effective date of the conditional use permit issued by the city or until such property has served its purpose and is completely filled, whichever first occurs," end quote. According to the original JPA, then, the landfill should have become a recreational area in 1978. I bring this up tonight because the draft environmental impact report, or DEIR, for the proposed biogas project at the landfill states the landfill will reach its fill levels in 2030. However, the DEIR also states the biogas project would continue operation for 20 years or until approximately 2042. The DEIR does not state, nor do we know, the purpose of the landfill after 2030. Because this expansion project is no longer active, will the landfill become the long-promised recreational area? I took a close look at what the aesthetic impact the proposed biogas project would have on the surrounding area. But how can the aesthetic impact be evaluated when we don't know the future purpose of the landfill upon reaching capacity? Would Vista Point Trails, the serenity of the area, now open to the public, be marred by the presence of the noisy biogas project which would operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week? I urge you to please put the biogas project on hold until a closure plan for this landfill has been created, and so all future implications are understood as we evaluate this proposed project. Not knowing the future of an area surrounding a project is a California Environmental Quality Act violation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Mayor, that was the last caller.
Okay, thank you. Okay, what's next item?
Next item would be action items. 88 Community Services and Parks regarding placement of a bench with a plaque and planting of a tree at Brand Park in memory of Lauren Anne Munoz Guehan. Motion authorizing placement of a bench with a plaque and planting of a tree at a Brand Park in memory of Lauren Anne Munoz Guehan?
Gagan.
Gagan? Gigan, sorry.
Mr. Golanyan, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, this item is brought to you in response to a request from council for a memorial for Ms. Gagan at the Brand Library. I'm going to turn it over to Onig Bolanikian, our Community Services and Parks Director, for a brief presentation. We will also show a video clip of Adam Schiff's speech at the memorial ceremony.
Mr. Bolanikian, in the report, I'm very sorry, in the report at page two, it has been written on page two, Senator Schiff, so it's Congressman Schiff.
Good afternoon to Lauren's family and friends. I want to thank you for inviting me to join in celebrating Lauren's remarkable life. I first met Lauren when she served as an intern.
Is your microphone on?
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Agajanian, members of the council, as Mr. Golanyan mentioned, city council back in September requested staff to come back with a report and submit a report regarding a placement of a bench and a plaque with a tree planted at Brand Park in memory of Laura Gagan. I would like to basically briefly talk about Laura, and then I do have a video of Congressman Adam Schiff at Laura's memorial service, and also I have the Gagan family on WebEx to make a few comments after my brief presentation. Laura Gagan was born and raised in Glendale. She frequented Brand Park and enjoyed playing soccer, having picnics with friends and family, enjoying the wading pool in the playground up at Brand Park. She also participated in the city's aquatics program at Crusoe Valley High School. She was also involved in her church choir and Girl Scouts. She attended Mark Keppel Elementary School, and after graduating elementary school, she went to Immaculate Heart and graduated from there in 2006. In 2006, following her graduation, Lauren volunteered at the local office for Congressman Adam Schiff, and she attended Georgetown University, where she majored in government and minored in Arabic and Spanish. After earning her college degree, Lauren worked at Georgetown's undergraduate admissions office, assisting undergraduate students in their undergraduate programs. In early 2016, Lauren and her partner decided to take a break from their day jobs and decided to bike the world, take a bike trip around the world. So in 2017, they started their trip in South Africa and cycled through 26 countries, including Africa, Europe, and Central Asia. They biked in all-weather terrain, camped outdoors, and basically lived off $15 a day. They did this for about a year, and during their journey, they met many people and documented the encounters on their blog. And I have noted their blog, Simply Cycling Blog, where they have various, a number of pictures with people and families that they have met in all over the world. On July 29, 2018, Lauren and her partner were cycling in Tajikistan, where a car driven by ISIS militants deliberately struck the cyclists, killing both Lauren and her partner. While meeting with Lauren's parents at Brand Park, they had expressed how safe, supportive, and diverse the city of Glendale was, and helping Lauren become the remarkable person that she had become in her adult life. In memory of Lauren, her family would like to plant an eastern redbud tree and install a bench with a plaque in memory of Lauren at the playground, upper playground area at Brand Park. We have met with parents, and we have staff, and the parents have found the location that's in your report at the upper playground area. I do have a video of Congressman Adam Schiff at the memorial service, if we can play that. And then I do have parents of Laura, Mr. and Mrs. Gagan online. We'd like to say a few words after the video.
Good afternoon to Lauren's family and friends. I want to thank you for inviting me to join in celebrating Lauren's remarkable life. I first met Lauren when she served as an intern in my district office in 2006, the first intern, in fact, that we had from Immaculate Heart High School. Of course, Lauren excelled in our office, and when she came to study in Washington, D.C., we were delighted to have her intern in our office there as well. My staff and I remember her as a very bright and positive young woman with a thirst for learning and a dedication to helping others. None of us were surprised that she went on to succeed in every endeavor and chose to devote herself to bettering the lives of others. Lauren's biking trip was in keeping with her courageous spirit, her open-heartedness, her belief in the fundamental goodness of human beings at home and around the world. Lauren's life and her story and that of her boyfriend Jay have moved and inspired millions around the world that have come to know them posthumously. Some may think that is because of how they died, but that is just not so. Tragically, the depravity of terror has claimed countless victims in the last 20 years, most of whom are known only to their family and friends. Know it is how Lauren and Jay lived which moves us. It is how their example jars us. Our lethargy and complacency about our own lives forces us to wake up and see the beauty around us, to take a deep breath and take it in, to question what is really important and how we spend the moments of our day. We cannot determine what we will come across in life. But we can decide whether to live with expectation of good. That is how Lauren lived, and that, I believe, is how she would have us live. Life is short. Lauren could not know how tragically short hers would be. None of us can. But she was determined not to waste any of it, not to miss a moment to help others, to know others, to experience others, to share the love of life she had with others from Los Angeles to Washington, from the savannas of Africa to the steppes of Asia. She left us each a different legacy. To me, her example impels us to step out of our routine, to place our hope and trust in others, even when tragedy might chase us otherwise, to see the beauty around us and in others, to live lives of constant amazement.
Thank you. Do we have Mr. and Mrs. Gagan online?
There they are.
Yeah. Bob and I want to thank the city council for considering our hope to celebrate the life of our daughter Lauren Anne Munoz Gagan by offering a gift to the city of Glendale in her memory. We thought of Brand Park immediately as the place to do this, as it played such an important life, a part in her life. Lauren spent many happy hours there over the years, learning many things, developing her relationships with family and friends, and growing up. Planting a tree and placing a bench in the child recreational area would be the perfect gift and also the ideal location for it, because throughout her life, Lauren loved children and children loved her. The eastern redbud tree flowers every spring and will bring joy to others, just as Lauren brought joy to all who knew her. The bench will create a space for people to rest, converse, and enjoy watching the children play. We believe the tree and the bench will bring people together and provide pleasure, comfort, and a plate for reflection. We want to thank the members of the Glendale City Council for giving the time to consider our request and the opportunity to make a dream of ours come true, to share Lauren's love with the residents of the city of Glendale and for all who visit Brand Park. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and my condolences. Is there anything else, Mr. Bolanikian?
Mr. Mayor, no, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, is there any comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Mr. Brat?
Yeah, I think Lauren's parents, the Gagans, and Mr. Bolanikian and Congressman Schiff have said pretty much what needs to be said. I just wanted to, I wanted to thank, first of all, Onig and Coco in particular, because Lauren's mom called me, I guess, it was one day a month or two ago, and, you know, she shared the wish that a tree be planted, a memorial be placed in Brand Park to honor Lauren's life. And when she called, she was not very hopeful that, you know, this was something that the city would do, and I, in fact, had no idea, being new myself, whether this is something that the city would do. I immediately, I think that day or the next day, I called Mr. Bolanikian and explained the background, and he immediately jumped on it and with his staff spoke to Lauren's parents and got everything worked out in a very short period of time. So I just want to say, you know, thanks, and I'm very happy to, you know, able to play a part in making this happen. I know I'm a parent. I think most of us on council here are, and it's a thing, you know, that parents fear the most, losing a child. And I know this memorial, you know, doesn't take any of that away, but I'm hoping that, you know, by creating a space for people to come by, and maybe they'll be interested in learning about who Lauren is and her life, and maybe inspire her in some way, and I think that brings something positive into our world, and I'm hoping that that gives some comfort to Lauren's parents. So, thank you, and I would like to move the item. I think there may be some friends that are calling in. I'm not quite sure, or some other of my colleagues that want to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Bratman. Is there any other comment?
Just a brief comment, Mr. Mayor. There are other comments as well. My heart goes out to the Gagan family and everyone that knew Lauren. I am sorry that I didn't have the chance to meet her and cross paths with her, and I'm very sorry that her life was taken in such a senseless manner. And we'll always remember Lauren when we're up at the park in Brand Park with the tree and the bench bearing her name. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, we do have a caller on the line.
Okay, let's go to the caller.
Tommy O'Connor, you're live, Tommy?
Hello?
Yes, Tammy? Hello?
Hello?
Yes, you're live. Go ahead.
Oh, hi. Thanks for taking my call. Members of the city council, I really am so happy you're considering a memorial plaque, bench, and tree for our dear Lauren. My name is Tammy O'Connor, and like the Gagan family, we've lived in Glendale for more than 30 years, and we found family and community here through amazing people, namely Vee and Bob Gagan, who've devoted themselves personally and professionally to taking care of others. We're lucky enough to live within spitting distance of them, and our kids grew up together, and we continue to consider them as our true family. About 26 years ago, Vee put together a book club of several women, all neighbors but not necessarily connected. Our first born, namely Lauren and my daughter Kendall, and a few other offspring from our book clubs, created their own book club when they were seven and eight years old. This was really big neighborhood news, as documented on the front page of the Glendale News Press years back. And then when our kids got their noses out of the book, we'd often go to our neighborhood's backyard, Brand Park. I remember Lauren as a little girl, complete with her Big Visor and her sunscreen shining all over her face, with her trusty backpack, trekking with her little sisters up to the park where kids would simply be kids, multiple rounds on the play equipment and a few games of tag, and a cool down in the cement water pool made for a near-perfect time for all of us, even though we had to endure our kids' complaints with the 20-minute walk home underneath the hot summer sun. And years later, when Lauren and Kendall would fly home from their east coast universities once again, they'd walk to Brand Park they'd walk to Brand Park to share the details of the months that had passed between visits. And I remember talking to Adam Schiff at Lauren's memorial about how we could think of an event that would honor Lauren each and every year. We continued to brainstorm on a few ideas and thought, oh, how about a community bike ride or a special day that would connect to the scholarship set up in Lauren's honor. But each idea was more grandiose than the next, and producing just one of them would be a real challenge. And then Vee mentioned the idea of a bench in Brand Park, and I knew this was the answer. It was simple, just like how Lauren and boyfriend Jay lived. It's enduring and it connects individuals to community in Lauren's most treasured place of her childhood. And now that I recently became a grandma, post pandemic, I envision Kendall and her husband and our little guy visiting Brand Park. They'll play a few rounds of tag, they'll jump on the play equipment, and they'll exhaust themselves. But now they'll have a place to recover and they'll sit on a shaded bench, they'll think of Lauren, and they'll marvel about how something so simple can bring so much joy to so many. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Mayor, that was the final caller.
Thank you. Is there any other comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Kasakian.
I want to thank my colleagues who brought this issue forward. And I just want to express how sorry I am to Lauren's parents that we even have to place a bench to remember such a beautiful soul. As evidenced by the people who've called in and spoken about her, that she was a bright shining light. And unfortunately, an act of terror has claimed this innocent life. But I'm glad that we're going to memorialize it so we can remind people in our city that we must always fight against hate. We must always try to drive out the darkness. And with that, I'm ready to vote for this when someone's considered. If no one does, I'd be happy to.
Thank you. Is there any other comment? Okay. I just feel so sorry for the parents. You know, I thought the rule of nature is, you know, we raise the kid, kids get older, the parents get older, and eventually they get so old that the kids bury their parents, not the parents to bury the kid. This is so sad story. And again, my condolences to the family. Anyway. Yes, Ms. Devine?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry I was on mute. I just want to very briefly say that it seems like she was quite a remarkable young woman who had much to give. But she became a victim of our world, of our cruel world, and that's too bad. A great loss to many, I can tell that. I wanted to comment on her metaphoric farewell. A ship is safest when it's at port, but that's not what ships are built for. And I thought that was so beautifully written. I'm happy to approve this to, for a young woman who left quite a legacy. You know, I've been told in the past that some people are in our lives for a season and some are in for a reason. Seems that Lauren was in for a short season, but a huge reason. So I'm happy to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. I think now, we have the second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bratman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Thank you. What's next, Mr. Ajayian?
8B Information Services Department regarding renewal of Verizon Wireless Agreement 1, Resolution Dispensing with Competitive Bidding and authorizing the interim city manager to execute an agreement under purchase order with Verizon Wireless via a participating addendum to the state of Utah, Nashville Master Agreement MA152 for wireless data, voice and accessories for a period of one year plus one option year for the amount now takes seat 600,000 per year.
Yes, Mr. Gulen.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Member City Council. I'm going to turn it over to Jason Bradford, our chief information officer, for a brief presentation of the report and open it up to questions.
Mr. Brat?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item for your consideration this evening is a request to renew our contract with Verizon Wireless for the next calendar year with one option year. By way of background, the city's used Verizon since 2012 for voice and data services for a variety of city functions. And historically, they've had the best reliability, coverage, call quality, and speed. Five, 10 years ago, the other providers just were not viable options in Glendale. Over the years, Glendale has continued to receive the lowest pricing Verizon has had to offer through its current contract. However, things have certainly changed in the last couple of years. Over the last several years, the other major players in the cellphone business, notably T-Mobile and AT&amp;T, have made significant investments to their networks. T-Mobile recently merged with Sprint. They've certainly acquired a bunch of spectrum. AT&amp;T FirstNet has continued their buildout and made significant changes to their network over the past several years. And historically, these providers have been less expensive than Verizon. Therefore, based on the progress that the other wireless providers have made, I'm proposing to extend our agreement for another year with Verizon for an option year. We will continue at the lowest price Verizon has to offer. However, during the next calendar year, we will evaluate the other providers in a formal RFP process. There's absolutely a potential for cost savings. We just need to ensure we get the same coverage in Glendale. I expect it to be a very competitive process. It'll be very interesting to see how it plays out. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess anybody wants to move the item?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bratman?
Yeah.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Brat. Okay, what's next, please?
Next would be nine hearings. 9A Community Development Regarding Appeal of Design Review Board's Denial of DRB Case Number PDR 1709694-C. 910 Layered Drive Continued from 10/20/20. Motion to reverse the design review board's decision and approve the project. Two, motion to sustain the design review board's decision to deny the project.
Thank you. I understand that applicant needs additional time to prepare the information requested by the council. I will open the hearing and would like to ask for a motion to continue the hearing to the January 26, 2021. I mean, we are going to 2021 without further public notice. Okay.
Can you repeat?
Need a motion?
As soon as he opens the hearing. I believe, Mr. Mayor, we need to open the hearing and then
He did. So he opened the hearing and requested a motion to continue to date certain January 26.
That's what I read.
Yeah.
Okay. If that date works, I'll move it.
January 26, 2021.
I'll second. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bratman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes, thank you. What's next on the agenda?
B would be Community Development Regarding Appeal of Design Review Board Approved of DRB Case Number PDR 1918581 for 1226 Vista Court. One, motion to sustain the design review board decision and approve the project. Two, motion reversing the design review board's decision, continuing the matter to December 1, 2020, and directing the city attorneys to prepare findings reversing the design review board's decision and denying the project. And three, motion to remand the project to the design review board for consideration.
Okay, I would like to ask for a motion to continue Item 9B to December 1, 2020 without further public notice. So I will ask my colleagues to approve this for following
Mayor, I just got a phone call. It says on the line, Item 9B, Ronnie Werner?
Yes.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, you can take that speaker. I would suggest you, if they want to speak, to limit it to the issue of whether or not to grant the continuance, since the matter hasn't been opened yet.
Okay, so I can ask my colleagues whether we can
Yeah, but you should take that speaker, but they can only speak as to whether or not to grant the continuance, not the
Just on whether to grant or not to grant. That's what the caller should, you know, concentrate on. Yes, I'm listening.
Ronnie Werner? Ronnie?
Yes. Yeah, hello. Hello, Mayor and City Council and staff. Thank you for letting me speak. And you may have heard from all the emails that have been flying around between staff and residents. None of us were really quite sure of the process of continuing a hearing, but as the appellant wasn't available due to being called back to work, we just want to make sure that this gets continued to a time when she can. In good faith, she let the case planner know immediately that she would be available only after December 18. And I noticed on the agenda that December 1, that wouldn't be late enough by delaying it until she gets done with her work. You know, she's in the motion picture television business, so, you know, her schedule depends on her film shoots and so on. So it's not as flexible as maybe a lot of people's jobs. But anyway, there's another hearing in Adams Hill, and that one has a turnaround time that would be consistent with this if it were continued to the December 18. So it's not like it's an unusual length of time or anything.
But I
And I noticed in the code, there's no specific guarantee of a turnaround time for hearings. So hopefully in the interest of having the appellant actually be at our own appeal, it seems reasonable that we should be able to accommodate her work schedule. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. But generally, they can, right now, they don't have to come forward. They can connect from anywhere through Zoom or other means, by phone calls. So at this time, I would like to entertain the motion that we postponed this to December 1, 2020. Is there any motion to do that? Then next week maybe, or following week, we will think about something else. But right now, is there anybody wants to extend this to December 1, 2020?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is it necessary for us to continue it to December 1 now? Could we maybe the interim city manager can tell us if we can just set it on that later date and we don't have to deal with this again on the 1st?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Member City Council, Councilmember Bratman, I think in the interest of both the appellant and the property owner, the applicant, it would be great for them to know that we set, council sets a date certain, so everyone's aware of when it will come back.
And if I may add, if the council doesn't set it on a date certain, then we would have to renotice the hearing. Right now, we can continue. We can bring it back December 1, and if the council decides on another continuance within your discretion, then you can do that at that meeting.
That's what I was saying, because this is, I guess it says December 1, is on the agenda for December 1. So the easiest way will be to continue until December 1. Do I have a motion to continue this to December 1?
I mean, is the holdup from my colleagues a fact that we would have to then move it again after the 1st?
Yes, that will be we can
Uh, Councilmember Najarian, you're muted.
Is there
No.
Nobody? Oh, Mr. Najarian?
So it's, I think we should be as equitable as possible to to all parties concerned and I think we should err on the side of the appellant who is feeling that she's a grief party. December 1, so the issue is they want it longer than December 1? She's not available till December 18. Is that the date? I heard.
Mr. Mayor, Member City Council, the last meeting of the year is on December 15. So if the appellant's not available until December 18, then the next available council meeting will be in January.
Oh, February.
And if I may, just in terms of the balancing of the equities, Councilmember Najarian, the staff has been trying to balance the interests of both the appellant and the applicant. And it's our understanding that the applicant is not, you know, has not been favorable to additional continuances. So that's why it's recommended to come back on the 1st or at the latest, you know, sometime this year.
Mayor, your point was well taken that it's a different, due to the pandemic, we just need to get in front of a computer screen and maybe take an hour off of our, you know, typically these things are maybe an hour long. Perhaps we should shoot for the 1st.
Is there a second?
I mean, I'll shoot, I can save the 1st. I could second that. I guess I'll second it, but ultimately, what do we have to lose by waiting, you know, a few more weeks? It's if people have requested, let all the parties be here and available. And if one person is saying that they're not available, let's try to accommodate that.
But this is
Technology, but maybe we don't know what the circumstances, I don't know what the circumstances are specifically that make them unavailable for the 1st. I'm for continuing this. I just want it to be something that everyone can agree on and that neither party is trying to game the process. I'll second Councilmember Najarian's motion for the sake of time and to move this forward, but
I mean, I'm willing to hear from, the problem is we have the other, we have the applicant saying, no, I'm ready to go and let's push forward. So we have to strike some sort of balance in what we think is fair. So I don't know. What do my other colleagues think?
Okay, if there is no comments, I want to move the item. We have the it's
We do have a 1st and a 2nd, correct?
Yeah. So let's go.
I think Councilmember Bratman
Yes, Councilmember Brat?
I'm just, I find this very confusing. So has, I mean, I know we had a caller, Ms. Werner's mentioned that the appellant isn't available till the 18th. We heard that from the appellant?
Yeah. Good question.
Well, I mean, this is
My letter, I received a letter from that
Mr. Mayor, Mayor City Council, if we can have Mr. Landsafame
Yes, Mr. Phil Landsafame is here. Is there anything you want to add?
Just to answer to the question, the appellant did ask for a continuance past the date that she indicated she'd be available, December 18 or 19. That would put the next available hearing at January 12.
January 12?
I would just say, let's, I mean, the appellant is spending, you know, a considerable amount of money to have this appealed. It seems unreasonable to do it at a time that she's not going to be able to attend. I understand that now we're all on Zoom. I don't know the circumstances, so I would rather just pick a time that is going to work for everybody. You know, if there needs to be, if we need to say December 1 now, and then there's some conversation with the appellant to see whether she can break away from whatever activity it falls with, you know, that might work. I don't know.
Okay, why we don't move it to December 1, and then we will discuss it with the appellant and read the person, the owner of the property, and see what we can do.
Yeah, and let me just say, before casting my vote, I'm not objecting to moving it to January 12 come December 1 or whenever we're back. Now all these dates are out there. But I will say that, you know, okay, so for those who came expecting to see a double header for a public hearing for these appeals, we're going to have to move it. But after that, if we move it to a second time, that's it. We're going to have to move forward with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bratman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes, what's next, please?
Next would be oral communications. Discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Councilman questions or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debated decision. The city manager may refer them Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debated decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. Mayor, we do not have any callers.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so we don't have any callers, so we go to the next item, please.
New business?
New, do we have new business? Mr. Garcia?
We have no new business.
Mr. Boranian?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Kasakian?
Motion to adjourn in memory of, uh, Mary Ann Plumlee and Rita McCannan.
Second.
Thank you. So we, uh, adjourn tonight and in their memory at 7:32 PM. This is a record, by the way. Thank you very much, everybody.
I'm better, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.